First of all.
You may begin.
Thank you. Do we have a quorum?
Yes.
Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Adam Stafford. Ms. Boozer Strather.
Here.
Mr. Saron Ruiz. Dr. Harris. Mrs. LaSalle- Salier Frazier.
Present.
Mrs. Nickens Murray. Dr. Z Miller.
Present.
Mr. Murray. Mr. Thomas. Mr. Valentine. Mrs. Williams. Dr. Miller.
So we don't have a quorum.
We don't have to have a quorum for a public hearing.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two boundary public hearing. Before I begin, I would like to ask everyone to turn off any wireless communication devices to avoid technical interference with our meeting. Also, we will have Spanish interpretation services available for this evening. Ms. Marida, would you please make an announcement that Spanish interpretation is available by clicking on the screen globe icon at the bottom of the screen?
La interpretación simultánea está disponible en español. En una computadora, en la parte baja de la pantalla, habrá un globo de interpretación. Haga clic en ese globo y seleccione Spanish. En un dispositivo móvil, en la parte baja de la pantalla, toca el icono del de elipses, los tres puntitos en la parte baja derecha. Toque el lenguaje, interpretación y toque español.
For those who are not able to observe now, this meeting is being recorded and information will be our board web on our board webpage. And available on the PGCPS YouTube channel for later viewing. The Board of Education has convened this evening for the sole purpose of receiving public comment on the boundary proposal presented by Dr. Golson. CEO at the October thirteenth twenty two, twenty twenty two war work session. The Board of Education appreciates your participation in this public hearing to voice your opinions on the proposed boundary proposal. With the public's involvement, we aim to meet the needs of our students and staff in Prince George's County Public Schools in a collaborative manner. We've already called the role. I will now yield the floor to Dr. Monica Golson, our chief executive officer, to provide brief remarks outlining the boundary proposal. Dr. Golson.
Good evening. Thank you. This is our second boundary public hearing where we're here to hear from our community members and then um we will make determine next steps based on responses. So I look forward to hearing them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. We will now hear from our registered speakers for public comment. Currently, there are forty four confirmed registered live public speakers for tonight's public hearing. This is an opportunity to hear from the community. Therefore, comments and questions presented tonight will not be addressed at this time. You will have three minutes to share your public comments. At the sound of the buzzer, you may complete that sentence only. You may not relinquish any part of your speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. You are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, board members, CEO, executive director, etc. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public comment process to move smoothly. Our first registered speaker for this evening is Darius Hyman. Mr. Hyman, we also have, uh, uh, before Mr. Hyman speaks, we also have received written comments from thirty registrants, which are available for review on board docs. Now we will go to Mr. Hyman. Is Mr. Hyman in the queue?
Yes, he was, uh, he was removed. Uh, can we go to Ms. Christie Tull?
Hello.
Oh, there he is. I see him now. Go ahead, Mr. Hyman. I'm sorry.
All right. Uh, good evening. My name is Darius Hyman. I am the PTA president of Pointer Ridge Elementary School. And I'm also the proud parent of a fourth grader at Pointer Ridge. I will be speaking on behalf of the individuals who were not able to get on the list and, uh, just the community of Pointer Ridge. Uh, Pointer Ridge is in South Bowie and it is a school that has been a pillar of the community for fifty one years. This school has been a safe haven for students. It has saved many lives through the years. Uh, there are many students who have, that are proud to call this, uh, their home currently and in past, we have many prominent members of society that are CEOs, military leaders that, uh, have come through Pointer Ridge and I've spoken to some of those individuals. So I spoke, uh, I would like to really share some of the stories that I have received over the last two weeks. Um, I've spoke with hundreds of families that are completely distraught at the idea of Pointer Ridge being closed. I've talked to community members that even though they no longer have students that have that are at Pointer Ridge, they have been, uh, very fond of the memory and the things that Pointer Ridge has provided to their family. Um, I know that Pointer Ridge is positioned to receive lots of new families coming to the community. We have three new communities on the board that will bring in about twenty one hundred new families estimate. And a good number of those will have school age kids based on the size and the, uh, on the, on the size of the, of the homes. It is, uh, my deepest request and concern that it will pose a tremendous hardship on the families and on the, on the children if this school is closed and be a bigger burden. Uh, if not handled properly. Uh, saving this school is going to be a good. It just breaks my heart, uh, to even think about it. Um, you know, there's so many stories I can't tell them all, but ultimately, you know, to the people who are decision makers, uh, Dr. Golson and the board. Um, I believe that you are in your position of leadership right now for a reason. And that your choice, uh, can ultimately be a huge catapult to keep this community together. Um, I'd like for you to look in your heart and understand that we are deeply, uh, standing together in order to keep this school, uh, open. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyman. And since, uh, we started and had the roll call, three board members have joined us and they are Alvaro, Sir Broom Ruiz, uh, David Murray and, uh, Vice Chair Sonya Williams. Now we will move to our next, uh, speaker, Kristi Toll, Save Porter Ridge Elementary.
Good evening. My name is Kristi Toll and I'm speaking regarding the consolidation of Pointer Ridge. Pointer Ridge is performing better than two of the schools slated to receive our students. According to Maryland Report Card data, Pointer Ridge is a four star school with a fifty one percent rating. Northview is a three star school with a twenty one percent rating. Perrywood is a four star school with forty six percent rating and Woodmore is a four star school with a sixty five percent rating. Overcrowding these schools is not going to help increase the students' academic performance or close their learning gap. The current data from the three schools show that Northview's enrollment is five hundred and seventy two, which is seventy two percent utilization. Perrywood's enrollment is five fifty one, sixty nine percent utilization. Woodmore's enrollment is four hundred fifty nine, eighty one percent utilization. If we add approximately, approximately a hundred students to each school, Northview's utilization rate increases to eighty four percent. Perrywood's increases to eighty one percent and Woodmore's utilization rate increases to ninety eight percent. Based on the above data, Woodmore is already over capacity even before we consolidate or consider the two new developments. How will consolidating Pointer Ridge impact transportation? Pointer Ridge is a community with a large number of walking students. If it is consolidated, those students have to be assigned to buses to travel five to seven miles away. Bus transportation is already unreliable because there is a bus shortage. Assigning a large group of students to buses will increase the transportation and bus sho- shortage as well as create hardships for families to try to get to work consistently and on time. This could also increase tardiness and attendance issues at the other schools. What impact will consolidation have on our students' mental health? Our children have suffered many adverse childhood experiences due to the pandemic. Learning virtually for a year and a half, attending school in a hybrid situation, wearing masks, staying six feet away, no touching, sharing or talking during lunch, and let's not forget taking random COVID nineteen tests. This school year is the first year that provides some normalcy to our students' lives. Now, Prince George's County is causing another adverse childhood experience for our students by closing their school. This goes directly against the county's campaign of mental health matters. You are setting our students up for failure and to fall through the cracks in the system. On October eighteenth, during morning bus duty, I was opening a car door for a first grade student. And as I opened the door, he said, wait, my school is closing? I don't want to have to go back to my old school. These are the things our young students are thinking about when they arrive at school instead of learning and making new friendships. Please vote to pause this plan and keep Pointer Ridge open and vote for our students. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Toll. Next, we will have Tiffany Golso, uh, concerns about overcrowding at Accokeet Academy.
Ms. Golso is not here, Dr. Miller.
Okay. Um, next, Mr. Gavin Stokes, concerns about how the boundary changes affect tag schools such as Heather Hills. Is Mr. Stokes here?
Yes, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Um, so we were, uh, a family that had our daughter in private school, um, and then we learned about the tag program. And when we compared the curriculum, we saw, we felt that, uh, Prince George's County offered a superior educational experience. Um, and it just made sense. And so, you know, we've been happy, we've been very happy with the, uh, the experience at Heather Hills. The PG County Public Schools have been, have been responsive to our, uh, requests and has helped us help the school. We have very active PTO. Um, um, and my question is Heather Hills is a tag magnet school. All the kids test in. Um, when they graduate or when they move out of fifth grade, um, what will be the plan? Because my understanding is that Benjamin Tasker would normally be the next school that those fifth graders would go to. Um, and Benjamin Tasker has also a tag program. Whereas, um, right now, the boundary, uh, would change and I think would send them to, uh, I think it's Kettering. If I'm not mistaken, um, I don't know that Kettering has a dedicated tag program. And, you know, that would be, you know, going from an all tag school to a school where she may or may not have access to tag education would be a step in the wrong direction. I think for all of the parents coming out of, uh, Heather Hills.
Is that it, Mr. Stokes?
Yes, we just really would like to know what the plan is for those, those kids who have been all tagged through their whole elementary school experience.
Thank you. Uh, you will get a, we receive a response from the, um, Chief Executive's Office. We will not be responding to any comments tonight.
And, and just to be clear, we would like to, you know, continue the tag program at Benjamin Tasker, which was the original plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Nicole Newton, questions about the areas that be affected by boundary changes. And I'm getting a text that Ms. Newton is not in the queue. So we'll move to the next person. Charmaine Jones, opposed to the boundary changes. Is Ms. Jones in the queue? I see her.
I am. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You may begin.
Yes, I am opposed to, um, re, um, districting my child's camp to Catalina. He currently attends Perrywood Elementary and I would like to say that every day or every other day his bus is late currently. Um, I do like, um, some of the things that my child has afforded the opportunity to have in this public school because prior to me moving to Upper Marlboro, I lived in New Carleton and the schools were not adequate for him. They were based, um, they were east all based schools in my opinion and school, um, levels were very low. And so I moved to Upper Marlboro in the last year to afford my son a better opportunity. And I agree with the gentleman that said, um, something about tag schools because I was a student at Heather Hills. And I left Heather Hills and I went to Kenmore and I left Kenmore and I went to Eleanor Roosevelt and I understand the, the responsibility of a parent and the responsibility it is to get a child better education. I have a African American male. He is eight years old. And some of the opportunities like the literacy program, the reading program and the things that Perry would have to offer, they're not offered in some of these schools. And if you guys redistrict my child to another school, I'm going to have to move and I'm going to have to put my kid back in private school. I'm a single mother. I can't afford that. And being a single mother and making the income that I make, you guys don't offer any programs for someone of my i- in my nature at this point because I make too much according to PG County's tax bracket. And I pay a lot. So I just feel like I pay a lot of money in taxes and I'd like for you guys to do something else.
Is that it, Ms. Jones?
Yes, that's it.
Thank you so much. Next, we will have Tanisha Everett, clarifying questions about the letter received from CEO regarding boundary changes.
Ms. Everett is not here, Dr. Miller.
Okay. Next, we will have Alan King, opposed to closure of Pointer Ridge Elementary.
Good evening. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, good evening.
All right. As a former teacher, I know the benefits of manageable class sizes. If a student's grade started flipping, I could be proactive and do strategic outreach to their parents to get them back on track. I was able to form connections with my students, so I spent more time teaching and less time disciplining. Our daughter benefits from her class size at Pointer Ridge. She enjoys the attention her teacher gives her and the other students. And because she's not overwhelmed, her teacher sends parents updates about our kids throughout the day. My wife and I enjoy the access we have to her teacher. Our daughter is among the students slated to go to Northview Elementary if Pointer Ridge closes. My wife spoke to some parents whose kids attend Northview. None of them knew about the potential consolidation. Several noted the classes are near max and there's a teacher shortage. The Northview parents were unsettled by the idea of more students coming to that school. In her letter, the CEO stated she's committed to taking a thoughtful approach that prioritizes equity. There's nothing equitable about busing young people out of their community to overcrowded classrooms in an understaffed school where teachers are too overwhelmed to give individual attention to students and be accessible to parents. The thoughtful approach is to keep Pointer Ridge open, keep the class sizes manageable and our teachers accessible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Momadu Kamara, opposed to closure of Pointer Ridge Elementary.
Mister, uh, or Ms. Momadu is not here.
Okay, thank you. Vania Cox, opposed to con- consolidation of Pointer Ridge Elementary.
Hello, good evening. I am, I'm actually speaking on behalf of the community. Um, the scenario that is being proposed was reached, uh, we feel without the consideration of the community, um. We were told that thirty seven participants from the school and the community, um, were, were, uh, casted their vote or voted in for this scenario. So we ourselves, um, uh, put out a scenario to the community. So I'm, um, voicing the results of that survey. Um, so we have about a hundred twenty six response from the survey. Of that response, um, we'll say, uh, ninety five percent were against, are against the consolidation. And eighty one percent of them say they have never participated in the scenario. In the, in the survey scenario, um, eighty eight percent of us feel that our child's mental, our children's mental health will be affected um, with explanations of unnecessary disruption after the COVID um, interruptions, stress and anxiety of adjusting to a new school after having established friends and teachers. Um, and this, these surveys were conducted from people, from stu-, uh, excuse me, from teachers, and not teachers, um, people whose children are in the classrooms, I'm sorry, and community members. Uh, and who will soon be attending school. Um, what else do we have? Um, eighty, eighty eight percent are not ready for the change if, if the consolidation does happen. And our other concerns are why create more bus routes during a teacher short, during a bus traffic shortage? And the new communities were not considered. Where would the, where would the children from the new, new communities go? And, um, there, this decision will, um, directly create overcrowding. You're taking children from one center, one sho- one school and moving them to another, it will definitely create overcrowding. We want to, to tell you that it is, it is, 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 you see that we did not want this. We did not vote for this. The community itself did not want this. You're reaching this decision without us. We did not want this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Our, our next speaker will require Spanish interpretation. Ziamara Santos, opposed to boundary change. Opposed to boundary change from Langley Park, McCormick Elementary School.
Dr. Miller, she was here, but she left.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to Gabrielle Hill. Questions regarding ability to choose what school children can attend.
She's not here.
Lavonda Detwiler Todd, questions regarding the effects of the boundary changes.
She's not here either.
Fanny Mendoza. Um, questions regarding the reasons to change school boundaries and Spanish interpretation is needed. Is Mendoza on the phone, um, in the queue?
No, she's not.
Thank you. Uh, Danielle, Daniel M. Brock, opposed to the change of Bounder White Hall Elementary.
He's not here either, Dr. Miller.
Tiffany Lawrence, opposed to boundary changes.
Hello, good evening.
Hello.
My name's Tiffany Lawrence and I am a parent of a fifth grader and a third grader at Calverton Elementary. And I just want to take this opportunity to, um, say that I am opposed to the new school boundary changes. I, um, got a letter in the mail and it said that my child is going to, um, probably end up going to Buck Lodge. That, uh, we were originally scheduled to go to MLK. MLK is five minutes driving from my house. There's often times where, uh, my kids catch the bus now. The bus is, uh, late or it doesn't show up and I need to drive my kids to school. I feel like this is going to be, um, much harder with the changes. If we had to go to Buck Lodge, I'm very involved in, with my child's education. So I'm constantly going to the school. Um, when we were able to sit in classes, I would sit in on the classes. I would volunteer. Um, if my children forget anything or if they're sick, I can easily access them. Moving them to Buck Lodge would be prohibitive in that sense because whereas it's less than five minutes for me to drive to the, to MLK where they would go, it's fifteen minutes at least for me to get to, um, MLK, uh, Buck Lodge. Also, um, Buck Lodge is not in as good physical condition compared to MLK. I went and drove by the school to take a look at it. And, um, I was really looking forward to my kids being able to go to MLK because of the way it is rated. And compared to Buck Lodge, Buck Lodge is not rated as well. As a taxpayer, I feel it's very unfair that my child would be put into, would be removed from a higher rated school to Buck Lodge, which is a smaller um, school that is further away. It's not in our community. It's in Adelphi. We're in the Calver- we're in Calverton. And that doesn't sound like a lot to someone who doesn't live here, but it is a distance. So, um, I've also talked to some of my other neighbors. They were unaware. Um, I know that there's been surveys put out, but a lot of people were unaware and they're equally unhappy. We're very dissatisfied and we don't want this change to happen. So we would like you to please reconsider. We do not feel that this is in the best interest of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Uh, Mr. Daniel M. Brock has arrived. And again, he's opposed to the change of boundary for Whitehall Elementary. And before Mr., um, M. Brock speaks, uh, you do not need to ra- put the raised hand on. We are only recognizing those persons who signed up for this and your name will be called if it's on the list. Thank you. Um, Mr. M. Brock.
Yes, can you see me?
I can hear you.
All right, there we go. Uh, how you doing? My name is Daniel M. Brock. Uh, this is my wife, Kira. I'm gonna make this quick. Uh, just the bottom line up front, a lot of people make pretty big decisions in life based on schools. Well, we moved here in June. I moved here solely because of the schools in this area. Um, currently, Whitehall is rated, uh, four out of five stars and has a percentage of, uh, seventy two percent. Uh, according to the Maryland Port Card and, uh, Rockledge Elementary is three out of five stars and a percentage of fifty eight percent. Uh, like I said, we specifically moved to this area so that our daughters can go, uh, to Whitehall Elementary. Um, there were a lot of changes in our children's lives recently due to COVID and things like that. Um, as soon as we, you know, introduce a bit of stability, it seems that, uh, that is trying to be changed. Um, growth, uh, and education for not only our daughter, um, but other children who go to Whitehall will be stunted if this move is enacted. Uh, every parent in our neighborhood that we have spoken to is, uh, vehemently against this change. Um, our daughter is fourth grade. Um, I'm in active duty, uh, military as a senior non-commissioned officer. I travel a lot. Uh, our daughter has been in four different schools. Uh, and like I said, she is in fourth grade and it's very important to us that she, you know, has some stability in school. She has friends at Whitehall. She loves Whitehall Elementary School. Um, so not only would this be, the move be devastating for her, but, uh, also to those uh, in her class. Um, like I said, we've spoken to several different parents uh, in the area as soon as we got the letter and, and when they received the letter and no one that we have spoken to is for this change. Um, so I know that the community as a whole or overall, excuse me, is, uh, is against it. Um, so our request is that, uh, the, the, the borders and the, and the boundaries that are currently out there, uh, remain in effect. Um, like I said, we've made some pretty big life decisions, uh, based solely on, uh, these things. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. M. Brock. Now we will move to Linda Lima Foncham. Is it mandatory for my child to change schools? Is this Foncham? I see her.
Yeah, yeah, I'm here. Hi.
Hi.
Okay, yeah, this is, uh, Linda Foncham. Um, I'm the mother of Michael Isa. He is a student in, uh, Martin Luther King, uh, Junior, uh, Mr. Martin Luther King Junior Middle School. Uh, I'm against the change for the school boundary because, uh, my kids have problem with change and we just moved over here. He went, he was in sixth grade. And now he's in seventh grade. So I received the letter that they're gonna be changing to the Buck Lodge, uh, middle school. And it's a little away from where we are because I'm in Beresby and Buck Lodge is right at Abderfa. From where we live, so Martin Luther King. And Buck Lodge is right at Adelphi. From where we live to Martin Luther King is just like ten minutes. So going to Buck Lodge to pick my son or drop my son off would gonna be a problem. Uh, interfering with my job too. And my son also have a problem with change. Which I also spoke with other neighbors around me, like kids are having problem with changes. So we cannot just change them just like that. So I was saying, oh, if the school or the, uh, Board of Education should at least take consideration of the kids because we cannot just be moving kids just like that. It's not easy. Because when we moved here, it took me almost like a half a school year to integrate my son, to get used to Martin Luther King. And then now he has to be moving again. So it gonna, uh, you know, disturb his, uh, educational proficiency, so.
Is that it, Ms. Foncham?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Next, we will move to Jennifer Guanillo. Concerns about single parents who need to be close in proximity to the schools because their children have special needs and do, don't do well with transitions.
Hi, I'm Jennifer and I'm a parent of two children, one in, um, Calverton Elementary and a sixth grader at MLK. Um, currently, we reside literally two minutes of distance of commute, um, from our home. And I am completely against and I feel for the additional parents around the area, including probably all of these other areas that, you know, are being affected, um, through this last minute call of school boundaries issue. Um, you know, my daughter has been through IEP since she began preschool. Um, and those of you who are not aware as far as parents out there, you know, the special needs and all of these specialties that are provided one-on-one with my child is very important to me. Um, the way that I view things as far as the school, I know Board of Education has actually heard my mouth as a mom for so many years, you know, because I've been very involved, um, in my, um, kids' schooling, their achievements. And that's one of the things that I've always known, at least PG County has always been about children's achievements, um, their productivity, the way that they actually grow, interact, you know, and now ever since the pandemic, um, thankfully, you know, therapy, therapeutic, um, has been instated in school systems, which I do appreciate, uh, which is actually one, one thing that I will say that has helped also my son being in MLK and having that available to him, um, compared to, I know another parent said Buck Lodge. Just in general speaking, the, the strategies, strategies of keeping the school very organized, very meticulous on the ways that the transitions are for these children are off the charts. And, you know, it's one of the things that if I feel like a lot of parents are really fighting for, it's not just because. Um, it's definitely, I've seen improvement on both of my children. You know, my daughter, she's selective mutism. Um, she's been dealing with the same specialists of IEP since she's been at this elementary school at kindergarten until now that she's in third grade. So she still has two more years there that I'm hoping that you guys will consider that, you know, my child still stays within the district of these particular schools, which are, you know, again, the commute, you know, um. PG County has always done this and so far, of course, pandemic hasn't helped any of us with the transportation issue from any beginning of the school year since. Um, so it is kind of really misleading as far as there being more focused on selecting boundaries, moving these kids and again, not really considering the kids' achievements if that's really what we're focusing on. Um, which I would hope it would be because this is why we send our children to school. Um, and it's not to actually backtrack them in their learning and then having them, you know, be in a depressive state. Because believe it or not, you know, I feel like the children's feelings aren't being really acknowledged of the possible change that this may bring and lead to, um, academically as well as emotionally, you know, and the way that they actually deal with certain changes. Um, so I would really appreciate that being, you know, taken into effect that if this is in regards to school systems and really caring about our children and, you know, those, those parents that are out there fighting for the tag program, you know, we, we all have smart kids and all we want is the best for them. And why change it? I understand overpopulation can be a big issue, but if it's a proximity thing, then that's more so probably a different way of going about things than actually students have, that have already been stabilized in these particular schools. Um, and I think that is it. So I really do hope and pray that something is being said and done and really, you know, focus on the children more than really just the general idea of the schools.
Thank you, Ms. Guanillo. Next, we will have Kendra Gatto, opposed to the closing of Point Ridge Elementary. Is Ms. Gatto here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Good evening, Dr. Golson, Dr. Miller, and members of the board. My name is Kendra Gatto. I'm speaking to you tonight to encourage you to delay or reconsider your decision to close Point Ridge Elementary at the end of the school year. I would like to share with you the impact you will have on our student community. As a reading specialist, I use books to teach life lessons. I recently taught a social emotional lesson about gratitude. After reading the text, we discussed things that the author felt grateful for in his life. We then discussed what we are grateful for and feel lucky to have in our own lives. I then had the students write three things in their journal that they felt grateful for in their life. Here are a few of their responses. I feel lucky to have nice teachers because some other teachers treat them very badly. I feel lucky to have friends because I thought a kid like me would never have any friends. I feel grateful to live in America because in some other places, people are dying to a war. I feel lucky for having a roof over my head because some kids and families have to live on the streets. I know these students and the experiences with life so far, so I know where their sentences were coming from. I'm not sure they could manage another change in their life. Our school provides a sense of security and family. Research shows that one in six children experience an adverse childhood experience by age six. Every child had one during the pandemic. Now they may have another one by closing our school. Our school community is being told that we are closing due to underutilization. How can this be true when there are new neighborhoods being built? Last week, I shared the number of housing units for Amber Ridge and South Lake Communities. Since then, I have discovered that a third community is being built in the Point Ridge Boundary. This community will also have apartments and how townhouses. They plan on the first build to start in March twenty twenty-three. If I could find this information from a quick Google, Google search, why didn't the consultant including, include this information when making recommendations to the board? If you choose to close Point Ridge, where will all of these students go? I hope these new housing developments are being considered when you make your decision. We are also being told that we are being closed due to the age of our building. Our building is four years younger than me. It has been well-maintained and it's clean and it has sturdy bones. I'm guessing the consultant looked at a piece of paper and never came to inspect the building itself. One of the schools to receive our students is in worse condition, but yet they are remaining open. When I first moved to the P section of Bowie thirty years ago, we were told that South Bowie would be getting a new school building. What happened to that plan? You could start building Point Ridge a new school on our backfield. I wondered if this was considered. Please think about our students' mental health when you are making your final decision. Please consider the new developments that are being built in the Point Ridge Boundary.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gatto. Next, we will go to Emmett Young. Opposed to boundary changes that will cause students in the same neighborhood to attend different schools.
Thank you very much to, uh, all the board and all the parents who are suffering, uh, this potential nightmare. My sons, we just moved from Danville, Virginia last year. Uh, my youngest son is seven, attends White Hall. My oldest son is twelve, attends Samuel Ogilvy. Both students are absolutely excellent. Sometimes I don't think we think about the emotional toll decisions like this have on our children emotionally and mentally. Uh, they're not, you know, we always think that they're just resilient, but not really understanding. Uh, the friendships and the environment is made. My youngest son, even in Danville Public School struggled. But when he came here, when we moved here because of the school system, uh, he was refreshed. He'd made friends. He loves going to school every day. And being able then to try to transition, my oldest son, when he has just a year left in middle school. And once again, those mental and emotional bonds are formed, I believe is short-sighted. I'm absolutely opposed to this proposition and hope it does not go through. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Diana Douglas. Comments regarding the need to invest in the rehabilitation of older school rather than make boundary changes.
Yes, hi. I'm the PC president for White Hall Elementary, speaking on behalf of the few that are being displaced in different places and not understanding why there hasn't been any answers of these, um, rezonings. Um, I hear and see that it happens often and that people can't really depend on where they move to, to, um, to stay there at their school. But it's just unfortunate that Bowie has increased twelve percent in equity and in home sales in the past two years. And the money is there, but we don't know where is it. You know, people, they're in this particular zip code of two zero seven one five, um, it has increased twelve percent. The school is old. We do have overpopulation, but, you know, it's supposed to be a green school. And building it to be better in other schools like it is something that can be reconsidered instead of pushing people into different places. Um, there's HVAC systems that need to be replaced, there's air filters. Water filtration can be used instead of buying water bottles. There's just money that's not being put in right places. School buses not being filled up. There's supposed to be school buses that are, um, shortages of bus drivers, but I don't understand that. And I don't understand why the last minute at the end of the summer, they're looking for new teachers everywhere. Um, because then something that could have been looked into earlier, knowing that people were purchasing homes and knowing that there is gonna be money put into taxpayers, um, into the county. Prince George's County is one of the, has the highest paying counties. Um, and it, it doesn't seem like it, so it doesn't make any sense. That is my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. We will now move to Andrea Melan-, Melendez. Uh, opposed to boundary changes that affect current students of Mary Harris Mother Jones Elementary. And Spanish interpretation will be needed. Ms. Melendez.
Señora Melendez está presente.
Hola buenas.
Sí, hello.
Hola, escucha.
Can you hear me?
Sí.
Sí.
Hola sí, um, estoy completamente en desacuerdo, más bien me opongo a la iniciativa que están tratando de hacer o que van a hacer. Um, emocionalmente les va, les va a causar un daño a los niños que están acostumbrados a sus, a sus escuelas, a sus maestros, a sus amigos. Ah, incluso mi niña, ah, tiene sus primos en su escuela. Aparte que la escuela queda cerca de donde vivimos. Entonces se me hace completamente injusto para los niños cambiarlo de su escuela a otro lugar. Es como que si a un padre, como que si a nosotros, nos arrebataran a nuestros niños y se los llevara a, se los llevara a alguien, como les pasaría como, como algún daño psicológico. No sé, a conocer nuevas personas, conocer nuevos maestros. Se me hace completamente injusto, perdón, lo que quieren hacer.
I find this, uh, very unfair, this change that you want to, that you're proposing on a change of the boundary schools, uh, for the children specifically, uh, because this will affect them emotionally mainly. They already have their friends in school. They already know their teachers. They already know the school building. Um, in fact, my daughter has her cousins at that same school. And I just think this is something that is very unfair to them. It will affect them tremendously emotionally. Uh, this, if this change goes through. Sí, señora Melendez, solo estaba traduciendo.
Is that it, the Santos?
Uh, eso es todo, señora Melendez. I think we lost her.
Okay. Then we'll move to the next person. Thank you. Uh, Yvette Villatoro, concerned about the redistricting of Auburn Community in Laurel due to the boundary changes.
Good evening. Um, my name is Yvette Villatoro and I would like, uh, specifically talk about District One, Bow Mill Elementary School. I got the letter about the recommendations that they want to move my kids and not only my kids, my community, Arbori Community that has, uh, around sixty-eight kids. They want to move to an overcrowded elementary school. Bow Mill right now, as right now, has four hundred, uh, kids. And Scott Hill Elementary has over six hundred. So, um, I don't understand why the, the letter said that they want to move my kids to, to reduce the crowd because Bow Mill is overcrowded. And so the kids right now, they, they just, they love their school. I'm really involved in their educations and I'm involved in the PTO. And so I would like, uh, for you guys to reconsider these decisions and to keep, uh, those sixty-eight kids in, at the Bow Mill Elementary School. Because it's a really, really high, um, it's num-, a greater number seven. And Scott Hill is greater number three. Please just think about the academically impact that the kids are going to face. And please think about, uh, this, um, Bow Mill Elementary School and the Arbori Community that is going to be affected. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Villatoro. Um, Amanda Escobar, if boundary changes are approved, is transportation going to be arranged? Would I need to re-register my child to the new school? Is Ms. Escobar in the queue? I see her, but I don't hear her.
Um, yes, I'm here. Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, hi. Um, I, I understand how some parents, um, don't like the decision. I, on the other hand, um, am actually happy about the decision. My son attends Hollywood Elementary School and, um, it is overcrowded. Um, and I'm actually excited about him moving over to Paint Branch Elementary School. Um, I feel that, um, there is too many kids for the kids to be able to learn, um, the way they need to, where he's currently at. So I, on the other hand, like the decision. Um, but I just wanted to know, well, since the school will be a little bit further from me, if there will be bus transportation. And do I have to, um, do I have to register my son at this new school? Or will this be an automatic transition from the school where he is currently in?
Thank you. That information will be provided to you through your, uh, the principal and information coming from the CEO. Uh, our next per-, and thank you, Ms. Escobar. Our next speaker is Shannon DeCastro, opposition to closing Point Ridge Elementary.
Hey, good afternoon or good evening, board members and family members. Um, yes, I wanted to just share our experience. Um, I am originally from Walt- Um, I am originally from Baltimore City and County, moved to Prince George's County back in two thousand and ten. And, um, when it was time to have children, I searched high and low. I attended public school from first to sixth grade, and then the rest of my education was private school. My husband attended public school up in Harford County. Um, unfortunately, coming outside of Prince George's County, it always had a stigma of not having the best school systems. However, um, being a resident of Prince George's County, I often am very proud and tell the stories of everything that the county has done during COVID. And I've been an active member of the, um, the surveys, the town halls, and now these hearings, unfortunately, with the, um, potential closing of Point Ridge. So I started by sending my kids to private school, my son. Well, we had difficulty because he was, um, diagnosed with A D H D. And in the middle of his first grade year, they asked us to leave. And Point Ridge was my zone school. I had not researched any public schools in Prince George's County. It was not on my list of options whatsoever. But thankfully, Point Ridge was here, literally around the corner, five minute drive. And, you know, the, the principal, the teachers, the support staff, everyone, the nursing staff has been very welcoming. My son left a class of one to ten ratio and he entered a class of one to twenty. I was shocked. I did not think he would do well, but he has not had one issue once his, um, diagnosis was, was medicated, um, but he loves his school. He was registered to attend tag at, um, Heather Hills. We gave him that option, but since he had attended Point Ridge for one year, he was happy. He didn't want to move and we chose not to move him to Heather Hills for tag. We kept him at Point Ridge. Our daughter attends there in the second grade. So with these changes comes questions. Um, again, I support all the testimonies that were shared in last week's call and today's call. You know, Point Ridge is the only school here in the, um, three oh one Central Avenue Zone. And, um, my biggest concern is what about staffing and overcrowding and support for those kids with I E Ps, five oh four plans and medication support as part of these moves is like one of my biggest concerns. So I just wanted to share that, taking that into consideration as well as the human element when you look at the data and the statistical analysis provided by the consultants.
That's great. Thank you, Ms. De Castro. We will next have Rashid Williams. Comments on proposed changes that affect White Hall Elementary. Mr. Williams.
Good evening, board members. How are you this evening?
Good evening.
Uh, first and foremost, I want to thank you for, uh, hearing us out today. Uh, you all have a tough job and I thank you for having this forum. We could voice our concerns. Uh, my concern is not necessarily with the redistricting itself. My concern specifically is with the suddenness of the redistricting. Um, so bottom line upfront, my recommendation and what I am advocating for is a grandfathering period where students who are currently attending certain schools, for instance, in this case, uh, my child at White Hall can continue to attend White Hall until completion. The reason for my advocacy for this position is that we are just coming out of a pandemic. Um, my daughter spent the first year at White Hall virtually in kindergarten. Had some acclimation in the first grade, then is now in the second grade, really starting to blossom and see some stability in her academic experience. Pulling her from the school that she's known, uh, in a abrupt period like this would adversely affect her ability and other kids' ability to continue their education. And so my position essentially is that by mitigating the move, it would enable the students to more easily transition to, uh, a new school zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Stephanie Gray, concerned over possible closure of Point Ridge Elementary School.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. Good afternoon, everyone, or good evening, everyone, and thank you for this time. However, I must, um, express my concern and my wonder, my true wonder as to whether this possibility is in fact a possibility or any, um, being pacified as a community. I really hope that the decision has not been made already to close Point Ridge and that there is still some consideration. Um, I heard Dr. Goldson's statement this morning on Fox Five News that she is still giving it thoughtful consideration. I pray that that is still the, the situation. Um, because otherwise it will be a waste of everyone's time, including your own. Um, and I hope that this is not just a check off of a box to say, oh, we heard community concerns and now we're going to continue on with our rhetoric. Um, I must continue the message from last week and this week that we've been told that Point Ridge Elementary School is underutilized. But to close it when we have three not even proposed pending housing developments. These are all concrete in the works, houses already built. Homes and families from Amber Ridge are already enrolled in Point Ridge Elementary School, which has increased our, um, overall utilization from last year to this year by five percent already. So we know that as these homes continue to be occupied, we will, um, see a significant growth in our student population and enrollment at Point Ridge Elementary School. I also want to call to your attention that a part of our educational experience is learning too and actually taking pride in our neighborhoods and having a sense of community. Part of why students don't, um, juveniles don't commit offenses regarding graffiti and things of that nature is because they have a sense of pride in their community. So to say to them, we don't care that you are, or we have decided against your best interest um, of maintaining your community school, we have decided to send you outside of your city to another city to attend school. What sense of pride and what sense of community will they have as they continue to grow? To share a personal testimony, I grew up in Washington, D C. I actually am the product of a school closure. My junior high school closed in Northwest and we were abruptly given a letter, July fifteenth. They all came in the mail and they said, this is the name of your new school. There was absolutely nothing we could say or do about it. I thank you for giving us a chance to speak about it when that was stolen from me. I want to share, however, that many of my peers did not have successful completion of their educations. They dropped out. They, you know, postured and said, oh, if I can't go to this school, I'm not going to any school. I thought it was a joke. When I got to that new school, they did not show up. As I'm an adult in my forties and I see them, life is a lot harder for them.
Thank you.
Did not go to school.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gray. Um, our next speaker is Belinda Queen, Boundary Change Concord Elementary School. Ms. Queen.
Thank you so very much. Hello to everyone, to my former board members and to the new board members. It's good to see you all. Okay, I am Belinda Queen. I just want to say it's disappointing in today's society that no notification went out to all community members. Election times, our leaders find a way to inform us, and even when the new schools were being built, we got information. We must remember that all of us are taxpayers and every taxpayer has spent big tax dollars toward our Prince George's County Public Schools. It is a shame that I had to find out about Concord Elementary School being closed through my former board member and colleague, Bahila Ma. My, me and my leaders in the Wilburn Community where our students do go to Concord was not aware of this. Many may not have kids in school, but we are concerned about scholars who are our future that we watch every day, their safety as they go back and forth to school. We are in the middle of major developments of downtown Prince George's and a stream development along our metro line. In the Wilburn area alone, on both sides of my home and Walkable Minute School, it's going to be townhomes and apartment complexes that are coming and in the planning stage in the next two years. Where would these children go? Where is the vision of our leaders? It speaks to the need for real leadership that can focus on getting through the day without losing sight of actual moving down the road. It speaks to the essential difference between leaders and management, which appear to be after all, found in presence of the action of a vision. What is community schools in Maryland supposed to be about? Community schools are schools that are developed and optimize partnerships that connect the school with the students, the family and the surrounding communities and the resources that are needed in order for our children to survive. What are community school factors? Community school factors refer to the immediate and physical and social surroundings of individuals and households that either increase or decrease the likelihood of violence, exploitation and abuse before doing and after migrating. I say, I need you to be visionary, you guys, not destroyers. I foresee our schools not just being, um, one of our top ten, you know, in a top ten. I, I, I see it being a top ten, but to do that, we have to work together. We have to have a vision for Prince George's County Public School. We have to think beyond of closing schools and refurbishing them, rebuilding them, making them even bigger and better that the schools could be used for after school programs. The schools could be used for movie theaters. The schools can be used for mental health for so much. Stop closing the schools in our community and have a vision for our county. Have a vision for our communities where people can walk to the local schools and use them for so many more. Stop being management and be a leader and be a visionary and let's make a difference right here in Prince George's County. Thank you so very much. And Ms. Wright is right here at my house, the next speaker. Just wanted to let y'all know.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. Next is Phyllis Wright, but there was no, uh, comment in terms of what you're speaking on tonight. May I have a subject?
Yes, ma'am. Safety. Um, Phyllis Wright, William Hall Academy P T O President. My concern is closing this school. Um, when they closed, uh, the school in Pickwick, I saw children walking along, uh, Wa- Mark- Wavell. What is that? Walk a meal road. Unattended. My main concern in this area, there are a lot of pedophiles. If we having children walking alone, not being on the bus, no safety for these kids, wh- what's going to happen to them? Where, where's their future going to be? Dr. Goldson, one thing I love about you because you always listen to our concerns and you do the best that you have done. You have done a great job. But please stop closing these schools where these kids have to walk so far from their homes and away from the public eye with danger is lurking there because right here in this area, there's a lot of danger there. And to compel these children on top of one another is not good. You cannot get a quality education when you have forty to fifty children in a classroom. You, they're, they're not learning. You, you cannot tell me that our children are learning when there's too many kids in the classroom. So we need to downsize. We don't need to keep pounding on. Each time you close a school, you create more problems. The problem come in, more fighting kids coming from different areas, from different neighborhoods. And that's when the problem come in. We need to think about the safety for our children here in Prince George's County. Okay, thank you so very much for taking my, my time.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Um, Josephine Quabla. Boundary Change Martin Luther King Junior Middle School.
Forty-four is not here, Dr. Miller.
Thank you. We'll move on to Danielle Simmons. Uh, Simmons Gaither. Concerns about the boundary changes and the closing of Point Ridge Elementary School.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Hi, so my name is Danielle Gaither. I am coming to you as not only a parent of two Point Ridge Elementary School students and the future of two more, um, but also as an overall community member in P G County. Um, I do have issue and I had issues since day one and I did attend all of those hearings and participate in those surveys of the boundary initiatives. P G County is one of the largest counties in the whole entire state. To take the consultants, outside consultants, to add, to do a broad stroke approach to our children's education was the wrong way to do it. And I'm coming from you, from working in healthcare for fifteen years. You have to do something, something has to change. You look at, you know, profits and in, in overall products. I get that. I understand that. I fully understand that. However, working in healthcare is almost equal to education and meaning that at the end of the day, your impact is a lot larger than numbers on an Excel sheet. Or i- i- it's very nuanced and you have to understand the people that you're impacting. And I don't think that these consultants have done that. And we have hired consultants in healthcare and they don't understand that. And that's where I would lean on the board and obviously your community members to help translate what their recommendation is and apply it to the county. And I don't think in these recommendations that was done at all. The needs for someone in Hyattsville versus Largo versus Upper Marlboro versus Bowie are very different, drastically different. The economics of those various areas are drastically different. So to take a broad stroke approach to the entire county is not serving anyone. And it is not doing the best for the people. It's not what's best for the students. I am directly impacted. My students, my kids are, my family is for pointers rich, you know? Coming from a D C public school system, having family in, as teachers in, uh, P G County Public Schools. I want, I want our children to stay in the public school system. But the, the things that you're doing are forcing parents to go to private school, to go to charter schools, to go out of the county, point blank, period. You're closing good schools, not just pointers rich, but I'm hearing the parents talk about all the top notch schools that the recommendations are, are to close. How do we go against other counties and say, you know what? Oh, well, we're closing our top schools and we're going to put them in larger classrooms. In any other county, those, the, the underutilization would be positioned as smaller class sizes. But for us, it's a negative. If we were in a predominantly white county like Anna Rundle or Crofton, it would not be positioned that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaither. Next, we will have Rebecca Guzman. Concerns about how these boundary changes will affect child's learning.
Hello, yes, good evening. My name is, uh, my name is Rebecca Guzman. I am a parent to a seven year old daughter that attends Greenbelt Elementary. I did receive the letter regarding her having to change school for the, um, upcoming school year. Um, my main concern is would this affect her learning as I, you just mentioned? Due to the fact that when my daughter started school, um, COVID, um, we had had the COVID pandemic. And she was online learning, which was a main struggle for her. And as we move forward to going back to school on first grade, um, um, on my end, my daughter was struggling with, um, she wasn't at the point that she was supposed to be. And due to the fact of the pandemic, I think that's where everything went wrong. That she wasn't on top of her grade level. But ever since in her school, I've seen that she's had made progress. Her teachers and staff in that school had made an effort to help her regard, regarding her math, her reading, as long as she had I Ready, literacy pro and so on and so forth. Up to this day, my daughter is in second grade, I'm sorry, second grade and, um, she's still, um, we're in the beginning of the school year. And from last year, the school has continued to be on top of her regarding pulling her aside to help her with one-on-one sessions. I'm also very involved with her teachers. Um, we do have meetings back to back to see where she's at, if she needs help or so on and so forth. But, um, also my daughter asked me one time about what card, what letter I was reading. And at the moment, I was reading the letter regarding her being recommended to a different school. And she literally broke down in tears in front of me saying, mommy, I do not want to change school. I love my teachers. I love my friends. My school is amazing. And how she, uh, she has a younger sister that's just turned four. She's like, I'm gonna have, um, my sister's gonna go with me. She's gonna love it because I love my school. And also, if it was ever happened for her to change school, my thing is, how would the other school know exactly where is she, um, struggling on? Will her, her information get transferred if it was to happen? Um, would I get the help? Like she has helped right off the back when she started second grade. Would it be the same thing on the other school, um, as well? I just think that, um, I have to speak up for my daughter, even though she's so small, but I feel like this will impact her emotionally. And just to guy, just for you guys to know, she, I feel like my daughter is an emotional person. She was just a little bit, she starts crying or anything, but I really hope you guys take into consideration everybody's, um, opinions and concerns, and I hope you guys hear me out. And, um, I hope it could go, move on and hope everything is, goes well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guzman. Uh, next will be, uh, Ida Wu Hulam. Regarding questions regarding the clos- And next will be uh Idowu Hulum regarding questions regarding the closure of schools.
They are not here, Dr. Miller.
Kristen Sahedeho. Kristen Sahedeho. I guess I'm from.
Yeah, Sahedeho.
Thank you.
Good evening. Um I'm a mother of a third grader at Pointer Ridge Elementary School that is recommended for closure. Um this is the first stable school year for my son and now you're recommending another change, a change that is within your control. Um closing down a school with manageable class sizes, operating within an incorporated growing city that has a vested interest in the school doesn't make the most sense to me or for the community. I understand the county is seeking to address utilization concerns and provide students access to modernized facilities. This plan seems to address only the physical concerns and doesn't consider the immediate impact that this abrupt change will make to the students in terms of maintaining a stable, stress-free learning environment conducive for thriving. Um there must be a better way to achieve your goals without putting the weight on your students and their families. Keeping intact a stable and strong school support system matters, especially on the heels of a pandemic and at a time where all school districts in the region are focused on getting kids back up to grade level. This recommendation doesn't just impact students at Pointer Ridge. It impacts families at Woodmore, Northview, Perrywood and all the families moving into the neighborhoods Amber Ridge and Southlake. What happens in the very near future when more families move into this district? As a proud resident for the past ten years and a parent trying to raise my family and build generational wealth in the county, I've been one of your biggest cheerleaders. I am now asking for your support. Please keep Pointer Ridge open. Thank you so much for your time and for listening to me this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Huddeho. Next, we will have Alba Sanchez. Questions regarding the reasons to change school boundaries. And Spanish interpretation will be needed for this um speaker.
Señora Alba Sanchez, ¿está lista?
Ms. Sanchez. Ms. Sanchez.
Señora Sanchez. Sí, ¿me escucha?
Yes, sí.
Okay, mi preocupación es ah acerca de tengo la niña que está al grado siete, el séptimo grado y me dice ella qué va a pasar con con las dos materias que ella lleva avanzadas si ella se cambia la bug lodge. Y la bug lodge, y yo ya ya fui a ver, es una 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 escuelita donde yo pienso que no tiene el todos los recursos que un estudiante necesita. Gracias.
My my issue is I do have a daughter in seventh grade and she voiced some concerns to me. Uh her concerns were on her two uh subjects that she is taking advanced classes to uh what will happen to them. I did pass by Bug Lodge uh school and I do see it's a very small school and I don't think it has the means or the support for my child. Thank you.
Gracias and thank you. Next, we will have Wendy Tomei, individual opposed to boundary changes. And Spanish interpretation will be needed for Ms. Tomei as well. Is she in the queue?
No, Dr. Miller, she's not in the queue, but uh Idowu Hulum is now here.
Okay, Idowu Hulum, you have the four. Ms. Hulum. Un unmute yourself.
All right. Hi, hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Um my name is Idow Hulum and I have two, three boys in PG County, one in Pointer Ridge and two in Benjamin Tascal. And when I got the letter, I actually asked some of my neighbors, but I don't understand what was going on. Is it just to a particular zip code or is it to um everyone in the county? Because I just wanna know what's going on and then as a teacher in preschool, I think it's gonna affect most of the kids, social and social emotional. And I don't understand. I told my son about it that um his school is gonna be changed from Pointer Ridge. And then we just moved to this area and he said, why? That he wants to stay in his school and then why will his school be changed? He's gonna miss his school, his teachers and all that. And then for both, I have two sons in Benjamin Tascal. I don't know what's going on. I've asked some of my neighbors, some of my friends and then I think I'm the only one getting the letter or the email. I just want to know what's going on and then how is it being based? Is it by the zip code or they just have a number of students taken out from um Benjamin Tascal for the zoning and then I'm not sure this will actually be good for the social emotional students, transferring them from one school to the other. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez.
No, I'm.
Ms. Tomei. And Ms. Tomei. Oh, no, no, this was Ms. Hulum. All right. Thank you, Ms. Hulum. Now we will move to um Wendy Tomei and um Spanish interpretation will be needed for her.
She's not in the queue. The next person is Obi Owengi.
Okay, Obi Owengi. Individual comments regarding the growth of Prince George's County.
Hi, good evening. I'm Obi Owengi. I'm a proud parent of three children that attended Pointer Ridge Elementary School. Um my oldest is sixteen, my youngest is six. She's in the first grade and she loves her school. Uh what bothers me is that I have reviewed your educational facilities. Uh yeah, educational facilities master plan and a lot of the things that are in involved uh included in that plan do not align with the boundary changes that you're proposing. The initiative to move kids to more modern schools, that is not the case for my child. We've been slated to move to Woodmore, which is an older building than Pointer Ridge. Also, I saw in the plan that there's gonna be a push for universal pre-K as a goal. And it also states that that has not um been factored in the projected head counts for all of the elementary schools. So I don't think that you guys are getting a full picture of how many students, how many potential students can go there if you include the pre-K students along with the growth of the community. I'm also looking at the numbers that you have for twenty twenty-two through twenty thirty. This is on page sixty-two. You have five years from now, you have Pointer Ridge with two hundred and eighty-four as the head count. Right now, we currently have three nine, three hundred and nineteen and that's up from five percent from last year. So I don't know how they came up with two hundred and eighty-four for for five years from now, knowing that we have three communities that are being built. We are twenty twenty-three, I'm sorry, twenty thirty, which is eight years from now, the head count is at two eighty-three. So the there's only a one, one difference between year five and year eight. This does not make sense to me and I hope that when you vote, you're not voting based on these numbers. And that's that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Owengi. Next, Amity Pope, PG Changemakers, School Closures. Is Ms. Pope in the queue?
Yes, she is. She's listed as PG Changemakers.
I see it now. Thank you.
I'm muted now. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, members of the school board. I am Amity Pope, interim executive director of PG Changemakers and I come before you because our members are upset, disheartened and frustrated. Transformation twenty twenty-six Equity and Excellence is the title as such for this school's strategic plan, the school district's strategic plan. Yet we are all gathered in this public hearing after receiving notice that schools are slated to close due to underutilization. You can choose for this to not be the new normal for this county because the post-COVID world that other geographies have adapted to and adjusted for is not closing their schools in the face of low enrollment, budgetary constraints or underutilization. These school districts across various geographies are immersed in the work that is messy, the work that is difficult, the work that is not pretty at all. But the results of their true transformational thinking are bringing about authentic transformational actions because all learners matter to them. Redistricting schools and rezoning schools is never the answer. And you just heard from the many parents that explained the economic strains and mental anxiety that their child's school closing will do to them and their families. This is the exact opposite of equity. Now, there are actual school district and state leaders that have worked to transform schools into places that serve all students well without closing buildings, especially those that have been historically marginalized. Their success involved working alongside community organizers, grassroots organizations and advocates within the school community and through their thoughtful partnerships. They engaged in unnecessary collegial and courageous conversations that produce tangible results workable for their stakeholders. We, PG Changemakers, we encourage you to engage with other members of your community to really introspect on how resources are organized, to reallocate and differentiate in a true effort to improve excellence and equity for all learners in this public school system. In closing, it cannot be business as usual, as usual, to get transformational solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pope. Patrice Murray, opposed to the closure of Pointer Ridge Elementary School.
Good evening. My name is Patrice Murray and I'm a resident of Bowie, Maryland. I am expressing my concern regarding the closing of Pointer Ridge Elementary School. Schools are not merely where we send our children to learn. They are instead a staple of the community. It is the school that makes a neighborhood a community. According to your comprehensive school boundary initiative published in September of this year, scenario two was selected based on an in-depth review and analysis of community engagement that corresponded with PG CPS leadership. However, according to your very own engagement recap takeaways, overutilization was seen as the greatest priority. Why then would you propose to close a school that was not over utilizing its resources? The engagement recap takeaways went on to point out that many participants were concerned about how development of school quality and distance to school slash transportation would be taken into account. Undoubtedly, you are aware of the developments that are coming in the immediate area of Porter Ridge School. Amber Ridge and Southlake, both of which have already started construction, as well as Mill Branch, which will soon be coming. To my knowledge, no schools are slated for construction in this area. Though, let us not forget, the residents here will be paying for the PPP schools that are already well underway in the county, outside of our district. With all the development in and around the immediate area of the Pointer Ridge School, many developers are paying a tax on every door they sell. It is criminal that not that not only none of those dollars are coming back to our community in the form of a new school. But those dollars are not even coming back to preserve the one elementary school located in South Bowie. It is a dereliction of duty as an educator to put our children at risk by exposing them to the dangers of traveling away from their home community to go to school. I will make these points as I close in hopes that you will reconsider closing a community staple. Pointer Ridge Elementary School is a vital part of our community. Children need the comfort of attending school in their neighborhood to excel. All parents do not have transportation to get their children, should they be needed during school hours. The children at Amberly Amber Ridge, Southlake and Mill Branch will have no school of their own to attend. The children in Collington Station and Pointer Ridge will have no school of their own to attend. And the community will have no central place within its borders to gather. Please reconsider the decision to close Pointer Ridge Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murray. Next, Tosin King, individual. Tosin King.
Hi.
Hi, you didn't indicate what your subject was. May I have your subject?
We are discussing the closure of Pointer Ridge. I'm actually um signed up on behalf of my daughter, who is a student at Pointer Ridge. She wanted to share her words.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jasmine and I go to Pointer Ridge. I think Pointer Ridge is a really good school. I think everybody should have a chance. I don't think anyone should have to miss the opportunity to go to Pointer Ridge. If you close it down, then I'll have to go to another school. And it takes time for me to get used to other schools. I feel safe at Pointer Ridge and I think it's a good school. And I really like it. And I feel secure and I have a lot of friends there. Some of my friends might go to different schools. And I don't think I wanna be out of school with my friends not there. I can make friends easily, but I won't be really used to the new building. And I think that it would be hard trying to go to a new school. I feel very safe at Pointer Ridge. I don't want my school to close down. My school is a very great place. My sister will have to go to a different school. And I don't want her to not get a chance to go to Pointer Ridge. I think Pointer Ridge is a really good school. And I think that we should keep this school open. Next year, we still had to give it a chance. We shouldn't close Pointer Ridge Elementary down. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Now we will have Leslie Cruz. And Ms. Cruz, you didn't.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Leslie Cruz and as a Pointer Ridge community homeowner, it saddens and disappointments that the county considering closing our neighborhood school. When considering purchasing my house seven years ago, the idea of a neighborhood school was a major draw for our future children. Now, as a mother of a one-year-old, it seems that that possibility is dwindling and is troubling. Although I do not have a school-aged child, I've come to know that Pointer Ridge Elementary is a high-performance school with a talented and gifted program. The classes are not overcrowded, which allows students like Jasmine the the ability to build relationships with their children, the teachers and the staff, and opportunities to ask questions and learn. As a product of PG CPS and as someone who attended two walkable elementary schools within this county, I can attest to the benefits of attending a neighborhood school. Because the children of our community attend a school within the neighborhood, they are able to spend less time commuting because no one likes commuting and dealing with the inherent struggles of riding a school bus and they get to spend more time with their families. Parents are able to access their children easily when the school is in the neighborhood they live in. Students are able to learn in a familiar environment surrounded by children of their community and don't have to navigate the cultural pressures and stress of attending schools in vastly different neighborhoods with differing values. What's most disturbing is that I'm a Pointer Ridge community member and I've only recently been made aware of this by a neighbor that I just met. It seems that the only residents aware of this moving demise of Pointer Ridge Elementary are parents of school-aged children. It's as if the assumption was made that only parents of students enrolled in Pointer Ridge Elementary value the school and see its potential closing as a devastating loss to our community. This is wrong. I'm certain that if other people in our community knew of the threat to the school closing, they'd be upset as well. Although my daughter isn't school-aged yet, I care about the children in Pointer Ridge community. I want them to attend school in a place that they've been proven to thrive. I want the parents to have strong relationships with the teachers and school administration. I do not want the school to close. If the decision to close the school is even partially based on low enrollment, I'd ask if anyone on the board has considered that there are children in the community that are not yet school-aged. There are families that have purchased homes with the dream of their child walking to school and having the ability to participate in activities without the added stress of commuting. Perhaps the school is high-performing because even without modern enhancements, it is a traditionally good school that thrives because they value education and not merely the appearance of the education. I'd ask if the board has considered how the students will fare at a new school. They consider the high possibility of declining grades, declining motivation and the increase in mental health concerns for children being placed in an unfamiliar environment and forced to adapt. These are kids. If we as adults struggle to adapt, how do we expect children to adjust and thrive? In reality, they're already thriving at Porter Ridge Elementary. Has the board considered the impact that closing the school would have on Pointa Ridge community? When considering the school closure, who truly benefits from this? It isn't the Pointa Ridge community that we love and we value.
Thank you, Ms.
We chose to live here because of its character. Don't destroy that by closing our school. I'm for the board to listen to the concerns of the residents and consider their desire to close this neighborhood asset. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. That concludes our, our public comments. Um, we have public, written, written public comments from Lorena Ramirez, uh, questions regarding the reasons to change school boundaries. Maritza Mendez, uh, Carrie Rogers, Crystal Gaston, Deshaun Tatum, Shanai Brown, Carla Vega, Lynette Pelzer Brown, Keisha Merced, Vivian Jimma, Dr. Christian Hodge Clark, Salma Lopez, Karen Ronderos, Carrie Valesquez, LaKish Cox, Kenya Carter, Digna Miranda, LaSelle Malbon, Dominika Green, Carla Flores, Maria Lopez, Andrea Sorto, Courtney Beverdich, DeAngela Mays, Jessica Nguyen, Lima Fancha, Lesa Malbon, uh, the Campbell family, uh, Tabika Harris, Tenille Jones, um, Terry Niriden, Vivian Jemaya. And these are all posted on board docs. And we have pre-recorded video from Jasmine King and Tina Diaz. I'd like to thank all of you for coming out to, or tuning in tonight to uh, test, provide your positions on the boundary changes. We will be meeting on Thursday, the board will be meeting on Thursday, October twenty-seventh, uh, in person at the Board of Education. And we will be discussing the boundary issues. Again, thank you for your participation and um, good night.